Everybody's here? Public comments. If you have something to say, just make it short, please. We know why a majority of you people are here, but you can give us an opinion.
My name is Mary Just Stassel, my husband Ron and some of my neighbors are here. We did a 46 West End Road and hit great. And we do not want the lot 102 of the Goldfarb subdivision allowed to happen what has happened to it. We don't understand that. We shouldn't have been in front of the zoning board long ago. And so I want to, I have different things that I'm going to present to you and you're going to have, or I want you to look at them. So I'll come up there for a second. This is an aerial view of the lot. And the line here over that way, that's all my property. This is the part that has been developed. This is pictures of the pipeline, gas pipeline that had been moved. That was in April. This is a picture of the entryway that they used onto my property to get access. And the police ended up having to stop them, but they didn't get it. They didn't show they got their equipment into the land where they go market, they never did a stop. This is the deed and of the Goldfarb plan and subdivision, which came with rules and regulations. Anybody needs to see that. Those, we were told it would be a civic, a civil issue, but after reading this and the zoning here is very distinct. If you read how Sam Goldfarb registered this, to get it registered at the courthouse, he had to go to the, he had to make up his plan. He had to present it to the township supervisors. And he did that on the, like in July of 1979, and it passed. So this carries weight with the township. 1979, so none of you guys were around, but that's it. In every deed, as when it's sold, it passes from either buyer to buyer or buyer to heir. But it's always written in this deed that you have to follow all of these rules and regulations. This is a printable page that we got off the computer just recently. This is mine, but I made three of these up because I think they're important. This was when this land was registered at the courthouse. You will notice it's registered as a commercial lot. There's three of them I made up, so everybody, I didn't know how many there were.
When was it zoned commercial?
Well, it never was, but that's how it's been processed up there. Now here's the notice of appeal that was supposedly waived by Mr. Andreas. You'll see where it's an agricultural lot on that. And it's on everything else that's agricultural. There's a report from the DEP, from the gas and oil representative Cory Slocum, that had to come out and handle the well because there was an active well on the land. And we tried to talk, everybody tried to tell the township, it's an active well, it's an active well. You go on a website, you go find it. It was Mr. Herman's well, 306, and it was producing gas. When we first met Mr. Andreas back in February of 2024, he told us he planned on moving that pipeline. And one evening he did, in April, I think it was April 23rd of '24, and moved it. The valley flooded with gas. I yelled out, I'm gonna call 911 because I knew what to do. I was outside. I ran in my house, I called Kathy Shield on the phone. She said, let me look out, let me see if I smell anything. And she looked out, she saw these guys. When I made that yell, they hurried up and hooked everything together and they jumped in the pickup trucks, she told me. Two pickup trucks, two guys. They told this man that accidentally hit it during construction. He said he didn't believe that there was too much out of the ground. So that's that paper. This one is from the DEP. Violations has started in February of 2024 and continued until, what's the last date on here? To '24 of '25. He has never come into compliance with anything with them. So those are the papers that I have that I wanted to share with you. And then I wanted to speak a little bit more because this has been going on.
Why don't we hold off your comments here for a little bit and let the applicant give a little pre-overview of what's going on with the project? And we will, this is, this is a part of the, this is a planning commission. And right now it's a time and place where the planning commission's got to review and evaluate this proposal and either, you know, approve, deny, or table it. And there's going to be a conditional use hearing where all you guys are notified. And that's going to be the time, that's going to be a legal record of it.
Oh, is that the one on the 23rd?
Yes, I believe that's the 23rd. So the applicant's attorney is here right now. And I can just kind of give the board a little overview of where we stand, so everyone kind of understands on the project.
Where we stand as a residents of?
No, where the township, the submission process. This is, this is the process that you have to go through right now. So just to give the board an overview, they made a formal land development submission for a contractor's yard. As part of this.
When's it due then, just recently?
Yeah, probably earlier this month. So we had a chance, you guys would have the plans in front of you that show what they are looking to develop. Obviously, there's a structure built there. And then in your package, you should have received the conditional, my review of the conditional use application and then my review of the land development application.
And who are you?
I am Keith Strade, I'm township engineer, red锥 engineer. So these are the, the two letters. Obviously, the.
Do you represent him as the engineer, his engineer also?
How about we hold off and let's?
Well, I just wonder now that you're.
No, I am not. I'm the township engineer, I'm a consultant. Let's, let's let them, I'm sure they have a little bit to discuss on the project and give an overview to the planning commission. We'll kind of work through a little bit of my letters and my comments. And then that'll give the chance for the public, we'll have some public comment on it and we can discuss it. But Jason, I assume you have a little bit of an overview, you would like to talk a little bit about the project?
Just real quick, where we are, as Keith mentioned, we received, well, the application was submitted, I believe, the second or third week in May. Here's the drawing itself. In addition to, this is the runoff, which was the holdup from the DEP. They needed this drawing. And that, that was basically the delay since, I want to say, October, November of 2024, getting their approval for that. So this is, this has already been submitted on behalf of Mr. Andreas to the DEP, the county. We've done our walkthrough, our preliminary application walkthrough at the site. After receiving the comments on the third from township's engineer, we went back to Mr. Harold McCutcheon, who is Gary's engineer. And he just wanted, he submitted this, did you get this?
No, I know.
He just said that, you know, there's nothing out of the ordinary, he can comply with that in addition to, or I'm sorry, in advance of the public hearing. He'll be able to provide that information. He said there wasn't anything that struck him as, you know, out of the ordinary.
Right, so a couple of the things, I mean, he did just receive my review letter Thursday of last week. I had quite a bit of comments on the plan itself. A lot of it was more for plan cleanup and stormwater related. Some of the survey information, I think this is kind of just an overview of the development. And there are some things that they definitely need to comply with, the land development. As part of the conditional use process, we, and this is some of the things that their engineer will respond to. I did ask about in regards to zoning, outdoor lighting, what they're proposing. You know, we want to make sure that they're not shielding light off onto adjacent properties. So that's something that they're gonna discuss and talk a little bit more in detail on. But I, I would like to talk a little bit about the, the storage units, ancillary buildings. I mean, can you kind of provide the board with what that intended use is? Or is it gonna be, is it an accessory building to the primary structure? Or is that something that's going to be looked to run out to the public?
Well, that, again, it was submitted with the application under the, under the guidance or guidelines that it was not only a conditional use, but a permitted use was the storage, the mini storage. So if that was actually, they're not built, there, there's really no plans, there, you know, I mean, there's not, there's no drawings actually in place for those. But if in fact, you know, they're, they're conditional use, so you don't have to come back. If you need additional storage units there, they would be tempor, or I'm sorry, they would be private units theoretically. I mean, under the permitted use, those mini storage units would shoot, or I guess would be for the public. But they're not, you know, there's no public requirement, it just says mini storage units. So again, they're not, they're the main structure storage unit that was originally applied as.
And he's not, he's not gonna rent these units out?
That's correct. Now, the original application that was submitted, when the property was built, was incorrectly submitted as residential. That's how the structure ended up being built, it was that there was a, there was a permit issued under residential. And then, so that's, that's how the structure ended up there. And then after, it was determined after it was, it was, the application was improperly issued. And that's where we ended up having to jump, work backwards from the appeal process in the, in the requesting the development.
So this building, obviously, it's a building, a full barn, whatever you want to say, a structure. It is used, appears to be used as a contractor's yard. This is zone A1, but you are allowed a contractor's yard in A1, but it's a conditional use. So it's permitted, but there, its conditions mean that the township can impose reasonable conditions on this approval process. I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to it? I know, we're, we're talking a little bit, so.
Yeah, so it's a, when you have a conditional use application and it's allowed for in the ordinances, really, if it fits within the box of what a conditional use is allowed, you would typically approve it or deny it. If you approve it, you can put reasonable conditions on it, along with any specific criteria that was listed in the ordinance. There's only one specific criteria for a contractor's yard in your ordinances. But that would come with a conditional use decision that would be at the next level. But you can also recommend conditions to your.
To the board for the hearing.
Yeah. And one of the other things too, I mean, I guess we maybe talked to a little bit buffer wise. The ordinance doesn't specifically state anything to buffer wise, but I do believe, you know, from the adjacent properties and the residential, you intend to use the existing trees that are there to act as a buffer.
There's actually going to be a thing, the fence that was submitted again on.
Six foot fence. It doesn't go down like it did before both. If you see it over that, they won't be, they'll be able to still see that even though you got a privacy fence.
But it's more, I felt that the restriction, the buffer is more for the noise and the, it's more for the nuisance of the noise because it's actually beneficial that it sits down lower because it's, you know.
Come and sit on my porch, you'll see everything that's wrong.
He showed us a tent from day one, it's a base for his construction.
And he told us that.
He gets out at five in the morning with a bunch of men, take a bunch of trucks and come back.
So, so as part of this too, in the, the other letter that's provided, this is more the land development side of it. They still have to go through land development because this is a building that is going to, you know, is constructed as part of it. So I have a few pages of comments on that. And they are kind of plan cleanup comments that will be addressed through the process. Some specific to more detailed survey information on the drawings. Also some more information on the stormwater management. They are gonna be disturbing more than 1.4 acres, or more than one acre. So it's gonna require an MPDS permit through the DEP. They are, or county conservation district, they are gonna require ENS approval through the Washington County Conservation District as to, as part of that. So that is all part of that approval process. And then we also require a developers' agreement and a stormwater operation maintenance agreement that usually will be forthcoming as part of the land development. So I don't think we need to go through every single one of my comments, but these are some of the highlights that will be required as part of the land development.
This story, divide a lot beside you, the volume of it is worthless. It was a six acre lot and he's up against it, they should be 25 feet away, according to Goldfarb.
We will be in civil court, but we might also be having a Pennsylvania attorney general here.
There's a lot of fraud going on here.
You mean the buildings within 25 feet of your property?
There's, that's one of the comments, they need to show setbacks on the plan.
Where have the permits been? Where, I haven't seen permit number one. All I've been told that there are permits. I have never seen one. I put an extension onto my home years ago. It had to be on the telephone pole, it had to be in the window. This township passed, addressed again, then we keep passing the buck. Okay, I've heard promises. I looked down on this garbage dump, it is devaluing my home. Her home is up for sale, people see what's going on. They stand at the top of the hill, they would come back for two or three times to, to look at our home, very interested, and walk away when they see it. It's just devaluing our property values.
It was supposed to be a pole building.
It was gonna be a pole building with everything inside. Last Sunday, from quarter after six in the morning till well after five in the afternoon, he was rocking a triaxle that was up to, up to the top of the tires with mud, diesel fuel just pouring out. I don't believe the machine had been started. You just can't, you can't hear. It goes on every day of the week randomly.
So with this process, this is a little backwards.
This shouldn't have been gone this far at all.
I can't speak to the building permits, but you know, as far as the township regulations and going out and monitoring everything, you know, this is, this has brought them to this stage of all the complaints that they have to comply. Now, if he did not build a building there, he would still have.
He would not have built a building, the township would have stopped him in April.
We had these meetings a long time ago.
We were never notified.
We had one five years ago, I lived here since 83. Couple times, there was shit going on like with the property. We got notified, we came to the meeting, we voiced our opinion, and they didn't do it. We never heard nothing about this, all of a sudden we hear there's a pole, you know, there's a pole building. So I says, okay, it's a pole building.
Where's permits?
But it's more than a pole building.
Well, I mean, the process he has to go through right now, the land development, conditional use, is the steps that he has to.
How can you zone a commercial though? Because.
It's not a zone commercial.
It's agricultural.
No, but you, a contractor's yard.
He's telling it that way, so any kind of license or anything, he buys your.
A contractor's yard is conditional, it's permitted under A1 in an agricultural district. It's permitted as a conditional use though. So reasonable conditions are allowed to be imposed on the applicant.
So according to the attorney general, whatever you want on that property is supposed to be on that piece of paper, on the building for me. Its purpose is to be on there.
It's allowing an agricultural, it doesn't need to be commercial. It does not need to be commercial.
And in April, they were told to shut him down, the township was told to shut him down because he was doing all of the grading work without permits. And the township does not shut him down.
And let's talk about our road. We have, we used to, we have a 10 ton weight limit on our road. The other day, Lowboy pulled out with his truck, he had two bobcats on it, a triaxle. He come back and he loaded, I don't know what the name of the machine is, a cinder machine. It goes like, when you're building 79, to, to, to level out the dirt. This is, how many tons? I mean, there's hardly any road left at the top of his driveway. I mean, I had, I had, 20 years ago, I pulled a, I bought a little, a tent, 10 ton, just to practice with. And I got the township on my ass because what are you gonna do with that machine? Well, my good lord, I wanted to play. But now I've got, I've got things that I'm seeing going up and down this road and they're.
We didn't get a bus on that road till a few years back.
Yes.
Our kids all walked on it.
They want that, the school bus come up right now. The school bus comes up, well, you got tractor trailers in the school buses at the same time. Me walking my dog.
There is a 10 ton limit. Then the signs were ripped down.
The signs were ripped down. Who did that?
The sign's back, but it's not up, it's leaning, it disappeared and all of a sudden it's leaning again.
And a fence, I'm sorry. He's so low down in the valley, he's ducked himself down into the ditch so low, it doesn't even come up to the bottom of her basement area, I can't believe. You could stand on my front porch and I can see everything that goes on down there. And you know, we were promised a lot of things.
Okay, okay.
We were promised a lot of things.
Okay, anybody else have anything to say?
I don't even know what they said.
We just want you to know that nobody on this road wants none of this. We don't want no commercial, we don't want this stuff. We want to be the way we were for 40 something years.
Our home values are just shot down to $10,000.
And relighting it, it's sold there, that was the last one, whole thing to go.
I'm listening to the next one junkyard. How much am I worth now, you know?
I know, it's an all kind of value. I have a whole bunch of stuff that I would like to say.
Gary, does your attorney have anything else he wants to say?
Yeah, like I said, this was originally set for the, the conditional use. We received the comments, like I said, on Thursday. The engineer said he will comply with the comments by the public hearing to have the plan addressed. In addition to the, the comments, my understanding, Keith, this is also going to the, to the county itself? Do we know, did the county get the, that's the?
The county does not review this, this is a subdivision plan. This would next, will go in front, this would be the conditional use hearing will be the next step.
That's scheduled for the township meeting at 6:30.
That's correct. And then, but the DEP.
Yeah, the D E P. Yes.
Correct, so those have been applied.
How long is it gonna take to do the DEP permit? They give you the idea?
It's in their hands right now. Yeah, they don't know what bring mercy to conservation.
Do you think you'll have it done before the meeting?
It's probably a good four to five month review process. But you gotta remember, that's also a third party approval that cannot be held up by the township. Now, you can't make it, I mean, they have to provide the township that review, you know, the approval letter. They technically can't do any work until we get that, but that is considered a third party approval that cannot hold up the approval or denial of the process.
It was submitted in January, I'm sorry.
And some of the conditions that are, that could be in place on this, they're not gonna be done in. You know what I mean? It's not an immediate, gonna be completely done before this following year.
I really, I have to say something because the conditional use being applied for now is absolutely ridiculous. This should have been done prior to this, this should have been on those permits. Because on February 24th of 2024, the Polish bulldozer was pulling on my land. I called the township and they said, oh, it's agricultural and it's a pole barn and we're allowed to do that. It's for personal storage, it's an individual who's buying this, not an LLC. Because I questioned that because Kathy told me this man owns an LLC. No, 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 we would never let that happen. So then the very next day, he came and he spoke to myself, Kathy and her husband. He told us the plan of what he's, he was building this as a place to run his business. He knew that from the get.
And he told me if his trucks were on that land, he wasn't doing very good. He needed his trucks to be out and about. If they were here, he was gonna work on them in the building and pull them out. Because if he wasn't, if his trucks weren't on a job site, he wasn't making any money.
And I was told that I could get my driveway plowed for free and salted because he would be out there early in the morning on the winter days, that's when it was going to be the noisiest. He would be loading up those trucks with salt and he would do that for me. And I said, no, I've lived here a long time and I haven't needed your help.
As part of some of the conditions, those can be some of the conditions that are.
I don't want the thing there, I don't want any of it. Attorney general says this is land fraud.
It's a permitted, conditional use approved.
On the building.
So we have no opinion as to what goes in there, our conditions?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's when the conditional use hearing is.
You sound like that he's, whatever he wants to do, he can do because he's got conditions.
As long as it's, as long as acceptable by the zoning board.
Well, the zoning board, we would never.
Not zoning board, we don't need to go to the zoning board.
I offered to go and pay for that, they draw it to me, no.
And it tells me, and this is written in every deed on that property, that this township, this township in 79 approved that subdivision to be what it is today. And all of the neighbors have abided by it, whether we like each other, we're not all friends, but we all, we all abide by this.
Is that like a HOA requirement?
No.
It's a restrictive covenant in the deed.
Yes.
Says a we wouldn't do it, it's a my.
It's in every deed when the Goldfarb plan, it was approved by Mount Pleasant Township.
Do those restrictive covenants expire or?
No, you wanna see it?
The covenants in the deed aren't the township's to enforce.
No, we don't.
They end up in civil court, we know that. They, they were approved, if you get a new subdivision in this township, don't you, don't you put conditions on them?
It's similar to things that, like you're saying, if you're in an HOA and the township is on there, there's things in restrictive covenants of an HOA, and that's a recorded document in your county. Well, your township isn't going to enforce the restrictive covenants that are on your HOA. It's similar to that. The township approves subdivision within the township, but the township doesn't enforce restrictive covenants on your property.
But that was part of the zoning, no? I mean, 25 foot setbacks, no trailer homes allowed without foundation.
No, sometimes subdivision plans actually have more stringent setbacks and the township.
My neighbor back there couldn't put a sign up that he's selling steel signs, he was told it was commercial. Yep. This guy puts, had a big name, Andreas, I mean, advertising who he is and what he is. Had a mailbox up, bringing his mail every day.
Well, township does have assigned ordinance.
Right down the road from this, this pole barn was another pole barn, it was put up by Al Pinkerton, which is Kara Fergus's stepfather. He was told he was not allowed to even. He was told he was not allowed to even store his vehicles in there during the winter, which he spends most of his work in the summer. Wasn't allowed to store his vehicles in there. Because this was agricultural and he was not allowed to do it. Now, these, we're a law-abiding citizens. We do what we're supposed to. There's no subdivisions, there's no this, that and other thing. I had to get a permit to get an electrician out to put on my circuit breaker, lighting a restaurant, whatever. I pay for my permits, I do everything the right way and I'm the one sitting here now with my little piece that I bought and worked my fucking life for.
That lot in our houses, they're losing thousands.
Nobody wants a job.
Eighty-five thousand for the lot alone.
And I, uh, conditions ain't gonna help us.
Mr. Ford used to own that lot. That might be something.
That's the whole damn problem. You can't undo it. Now it's already been done.
But if our sister
Well, no.
No, he owned the lot earlier.
You know that that wasn't
Yeah, Gary Ford.
This lot, if Mr. Ford still lived there, that property wouldn't be there.
You're damn right.
Wouldn't have that business. Gary lived next door. That business wouldn't be on, wouldn't, believe me. But Gary, we should all tell Gary the same thing.
Tell me that's true.
Okay, okay. We're going to, uh,
We need a buyer and a breacher.
So, I mean, they have, they have options of approving it.
Yeah, you can approve it contingent on certain things happening.
Some things that I would like to see, you know, no offense Gary, but I mean, these people do have some concerns about access to your property. I would like you to see if the township goes along with it just using the access from five-nineteen. If this all gets approved, five-nineteen, your property, don't come in past their houses.
Oh, Rich, did you bring your pictures?
They're in a truck.
Only, you know what I mean? Because it's a longer way and it is, that is a very narrow route. To do that and maybe, you know, I guess you're gonna have to bond that road for the township or whatever, help do that. Um, and put some tree buffer in along that because I said, I, I was over that way and a lot of the trees are down. You know, they used to be all woods. And that's my, that's in my opinion, just some pine trees or something to, to cover up your building and whatever you can, because you do sit down in that hole down there.
Fifty years for a pine tree to grow.
What we're worried about
Who's gonna reverse us for our property value declining? Because of the mess that's crushed my driveway. Has any one of you drove up and down the road and looked at it?
Yes, I've been down. And I understand.
Now, what if you lived back toward that? What if you had to hear that? Look, this will, yeah, nobody's thinking about that. They just wanna move on to the next thing. We live there, since you moved in, my property value has gone down because it's a, it's a mess. It's a mess. We have to look at it. Whoever's gonna sell my own, the first thing they're gonna do is drive by his lot and go, no. They're gonna keep on driving right on by because it, yeah, everybody on the road.
We, we are just an advisory board.
Yeah, okay, advise.
Start advising.
No, no.
Advise.
Okay. Bring up this board, please.
We're trying to make a compromise, whatever.
Who, who started this whole thing?
Yeah, that's a
Who started it? The township should have never gave anybody permit to do what was done.
Never should have.
And the last meeting that I came here, they admitted it.
Resuming, Mark.
They admitted it. They said, no, we should have did this. But we did it, now we gotta deal with it. Well, it's not just the township dealing with it, it's all the residents on that road. Okay? And me and my family are one of them.
So, I, a question. You have conditions on this property if this should pass and he has conditions. So when we think he's maybe so-called out of compliance, who do we take this up with?
You're supposed to come to the township and complain. This gentleman right
Well, we've been complaining since the man moved in. And then they left him go on and on.
That'd be good, more evidently.
So maybe it's all like a higher property.
I think maybe some conditional hours may be in
No, I ain't gonna handle it. Because he, he, this woman used to like to sit out on her back porch and listen to the birds and now she can't. I couldn't even open my door because of the fumes in the air.
The other day, it's not so bad, I couldn't go outside. That's the truth though. Usually don't complain. Couldn't even open my garage door, okay? I just, I didn't, felt like diesel and some type of chemical. I don't know what he was doing.
Oh, that, um, the land doesn't hurt. The water storm drainage system
Well, he has, he is
Across Mrs. Weir's road, the water's coming on and then it
He's putting a tank in. He has to get, he has to put a tank in. And that is bonded where it's, if, if anyone, he would forget about it. He has money in escrow to take care of that so it doesn't
No, that, that, that's
Get permanent for suit holding.
Yeah, those got tabled back in, uh, August.
He put it in his leg.
Yeah, but it, yeah, I don't know why anybody would allow this to happen. I don't, it's just not right. And our township is letting us all down.
For sure. Don't get the lawyer.
But does it want, is this strange when you're like, is that like?
My neighbor's helping.
So you bend over, you have compliance, is that what it is?
No, because nothing he has done, look at everything I gave you. Nothing was in compliance. He didn't get the well shut down like he should have. He told everybody that it wasn't
There's thirty feet
Is that, they shutting that well up?
He put a, he put a
What's that?
It's been abandoned for some
No, it has not. You can look at my paperwork. The company that owns it is out of South Point. They had to come out and shut that well down.
They had to come out and shut it down and almost caused a fire on my property. And we had to call the DEA and everything. And they, they capped it. They got somebody down in Houston. They come up and cap it.
Oh, so it's capped?
No, well
No, no.
Well, they, they didn't cap it. They put a sleeve on it.
Did they have plans on plugging the well?
No.
There was gas in the well at the time.
It runs through the pipes.
The, the
Your well is read on
Zero all time basis. There you go. See, he was there every day at like five to seven. And order till three thirty quarter four, see her come back down. Two days, beats.
Pay for a lawyer?
Right next to him. Was that a? No, not that I know of. Navy, and I've been out there, I don't remember. Oh, did you? And I expect he's shut down.
One thing is, when you buy.
He bought that property.
She has a son.
He lives in the back. The house is in the back. It's pretty good. My neighbor, Greg, I met him.
He's got that house over there. The exact address. I've met him several times. This is how he knew he was the one.
Of course. Well, then now, now he's getting ready to go. Last week, we were, we wasn't working.
Well, we gotta do something. We need to let someone on the hold. They don't want to trade. Think if we're going, might have to ask.
Is that? Yeah. I mean, just because you want to issue, it says we have to ship. Yes.
He's telling me he's trying to back up. I know my permission means the white person may also.
Yeah.
You don't.
That bad. I don't know. I didn't even open it. Yeah. You mean? Sorry.
You walk down there? Yeah, like you said.
But it shows.
They told them the van has to be stopped. He had a cease and desist order. He was all that. Okay, he was gone.
Everybody was watching. I'm tired. I gave it time, I thought.
One supervisor, each of us will all take it or do it or something.
Don't worry about that.
So, Mr. Picks the Township Roads.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we will, if we actually have one.
It's not their back end now. I was. Your grandson. They didn't say anything more. Where's your grand son? Okay. I used to. I'm so glad I'm hearing this. No, no. The stuff, you know, he doesn't. That's the good stuff. Never going to be done all the time. Never, no. And when I called the township, they're, oh, no.
Said it's a progress, told the guy was going to fix first.
Yeah. I'm loving where. I'm cutting out a little farm or field, which isn't.
What you need there? Man, what you need?
One's pretty good, I see. This one's pretty good.
Yeah.
I'll be here.
Yeah, I'll have those. Pretty.
Yeah, this one, the water retired. He didn't, they would have.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Then this one went bad, they gave it to me, but they didn't call. Went up and tried to power it. The doctor said that what happened. Or that partial, that's ridiculous. Last, I'm glad. They wrote the water retired, it started to bug me, I told them. Probably from late. Even after a couple of days, they were all, yeah. They get a lot of work. I kind of wake up again. It's it for some reason, it's wanting to change this. Didn't want to ask why it was good.
Yeah.
I can deal with it. I can deal with it. She's not, I can buy like a lot of murders. I can buy new ones. The.
Go back to home.
Oh, yeah, they, they, you know, they, they, I don't know what they. It worked out pretty well. That's the division by the township. But he told me two weeks ago. I don't know. Something, you know. Everything I can do, I can't do. But you can't explain.
The engineers don't mess with that. Yeah. It's a game, for sure.
Yeah.
So, the tech, the tech, they use that land. They don't stay in that building of spirit.
I did that. I don't know what's going next. Well, they got the one on the twenty third.
That's one I'll talk.
That's on the twenty third, stay on the.
I understand, but what's, what's really different than this?
Well, they'll be the commissioners over here. I live. But they said it's a public, so I get on this. I just got a letter, a mail.
We got one too.
We had your question.
I saw that, yeah.
But seemed like everybody wanted to run it pretty much. I ran into nobody, and they just, I wasn't the first, but if she. I'll get on chat. Don't have somebody who forces. Do it for us better.
Fill the stream up with rocks.
Ten thousand.
Oh, I don't think. I don't know.
A fly doesn't actually. It's not going to fly off. I just. He's the agent. He's the.
Yeah. Just what you said.
I think that was.
Dan, they're not rebel to. Because he's. They're going.
Shh. Has.
Because it goes. I don't know why somebody is writing this down. Should they say?
The quick down.
Yeah, but I said, yeah, I always say seven or nine. I got the rest of my stuff. I mean, really, they're all. People apply, it's proper. Okay. No doubt. They're making, you know. I think.
Okay, we're back from our little talk. Uh, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to table this.
And that means?
Well, we got this happen, they're going to have to have that conditional use hearing at the end of the, at the end of the month. But it's going to be tabled. Uh, we have comments that we're going to do, we told you something on them tonight about some things we'd like. We'd like to see the majority of this list that the engineer has come up with, done before the conditional use hearing.
Uh, he, just so you know, he said that's probably the fifteenth or sixteenth of this month, we should have.
Okay, well, I mean, yes, we're just, he was just telling you that.
Okay.
Uh, we did mention, like I said, some of us have been thinking about, you know, like the buffering zone. Do some pine trees that grow fast, they grow fast up on that thing there. About the access only to five nineteen, so your cars and trucks look in the other way. Talking about putting some timeline limits on your activities that you're building. Um, and like to see something also in the, where you have about the buildings here, about your storage buildings. Something in writing that you would never use them for commercial use as a, you know, rent out for people for storage. Cut things back. And also comments from the people over here.
Are we adding more buildings?
Excuse me?
Is that what we're doing, is we're adding more buildings here?
No, 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 he has storage areas down here or something, yeah. If you want to look at the drawing, we can show you.
So, he's already got a reefer truck back there all with no wheels on it. So, we're just going to keep, put more and more tractor trailer boxes back in there?
He stores them. Tractor.
But the people, the audience would like to come up with some things, like we talked about buffering, I mean.
They'll go.
This, this may happen, you know, I can't, I, that's up to the supervisors whether they vote on this or not. But if you can come up with some ideas on paper and submit them to the township.
Nothing outside the building.
Well, you can say that, write that down and say, hey, if you would like to see that or whatever.
It was a pole barn for personal belongings owned by an individual. End of story, that's what he applied for, that's what he should get. And that mine even followed the zoning thing there, even though he registered himself as a commercial thing up at the courthouse.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to retable this then. Do you have a second?
Yeah, that's a massive garage, that's industrial.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your comments and time.
Does that mean the meeting on the twenty third, there's still a meeting on the twenty third?
The township, yeah, if it's for the.
It's been advertised, yeah.
All right, well, then come see the commissioner.
That's the time to talk.
He also filled in a stream that runs in the land. It was about the rock. I thought that was the label.
All right, well, we can talk about this in the conditional use.
His condition.
I think he finds by.
Yeah, I, I don't know the township, how they notify. Is there a Facebook page or whatever, or?
Well, I mean, you guys keep using different lines.
They have, they have.
Okay, well, yeah, just pay attention to the page, yeah, the paper, I don't know if it's five thirty or, or it's been advertised.
Six thirty, six thirty.
Six o'clock was on our side.
Excuse me?
Six o'clock was on our side.
Oh, was it six o'clock? I thought they, they must have changed it.
Yeah, so they put signs out that notified you guys, right? So, that's the time and the place of that.
You come to where there were two boards on the land.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry. That's where, that's where it is.
Hey, Gary?
Well, he walked the road.
One air road.
Did you, yeah, did you not see this?
Hi, Bobby Joe.
Yeah. How are you?
I'm well, look at you.
I haven't seen you forever.
Yeah, I kept thinking, I got to stop to see you. Do you still have?
That's it? That's it?
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll come back to see you.
I'm there.
Okay.
I bet you did some.
Look at over there, Paul.
Is that?
It's a breast ahead.
So, it looks like it is. I see your perm.
The red or brown. And there's like.
So, is this the one right there?
Yeah.
Did you switch it on? Oh, we're still on.
Yeah, I got meeting. I got one of these signs. From Bill.
Okay, if you got, I almost said it was there, I see.
Yeah, because, um, they did one on my.
I could get this. So, listen to this. This is not the actual township. Township is. Township.
Uh, this is something back.
So, that's not, that's not correct, that's not the correct. Zoning is A one. That's a town, or A one, it's not.
Very long. All right, I got this one.
Okay, okay. Hey, and the, and the conditional use here.
Put that back. Yeah, we're saying, I mean, I'm not, no.
The county just goes.
I just saw what's.
Oh, yeah.
Get it back to the township or whatever, because he was in the.
It does what you're trying to do, because we're going to give him a civil court about a property law.
All right, well, okay. I'm happy.
All right, we're going to, we're going to continue on with our meeting.
Oh, we're sorry.
Um, discussion on solar panels for residential use.
You want me to give you a little overview?
Sure.
All right, so, um, so I wasn't quite involved with the last discussion of it, but the township, we've been kind of working on the solar ordinance. I've been very involved in, um, Smith Township and some surrounding townships with solar and how that's kind of, um, the conditional use processes that we went through very, a lot of residents having issues with it. So, what we did is, we beefed up the zoning or the solar ordinance even more and, um, I believe it was allowed. We're not talking about residential, um, solar panels, but this is principal solar energy system, large solar farms. Uh, that you see if you drive out on eighteen going through.
We, you already used to have an order, you guys.
That's correct, there is a residential one, but this is for large principal solar energy systems.
No, it's the other way around, we already, we already come up with the, the, uh, commercial ones.
Well, this is the revised commercial one.
Oh.
If you guys have already developed it, and Tom, I know Tom has a little more history, I just got appointed as the engineer in January. So, I am a little bit new to what the townships and all the requirements, but this is specifically for a commercial, a large principal solar energy, uh, system. And what we did is, I believe it might have been permitted or allowed as a conditional use in A one. And we looked to move it only to M one light industrial district.
That's what we did, yeah.
That's correct, so, um, between Tom and my office, we developed this ordinance. It, it talks about all the things that the applicant would be required to do. Um, typically, a lot of ordinances get developed off of, uh, PSATs, they have a general law of ordinance, and a lot of townships will adopt that one. Um, my experiences and what I went through in Smith Township, um, we've, we've looked to increase some of those requirements. And if we allow it as a conditional use, that, if you look at that zoning map back there, that pink area, that's the M one district. That's the only location, so this is a, uh, allowed use by the, the state, uh, the state. So, you have to provide for use within your township, and that's where we were looking at, um, putting that, uh, allow or conditional use in M one district. So, there's multiple other requirements, I, I know Tom has kind of talked to you guys a little bit more about this in previous, um, meetings. So, we went back and forth, I believe this has been advertised.
I think he said it's been advertised and sent to the counties.
Yep, and sent to the counties, so, um, it just talks a little bit more beefing up the screen, vegetation buffers, um, decommissioning plans, securities that are required, so we're looking, uh, you know, to protect the township. And, uh, if someone wanted to come in in A one and do a solar farm, uh, they would have to go through the formal process of a zoning hearing. Um, they would, they would ask for a use variance, which could be denied. Um, but this, this ordinance is definitely a lot more beefed up. And addresses a lot more issues. I don't know if a motion's needed on that or. Okay, all right, so, yeah.
See, I thought we were going to discuss about the, some residential type stuff.
Oh, okay, I, we did, we haven't worked on, I'm not aware of that, kind of residential.
I think Tom said that there was two ordinances, the one was for the main commercial, and then something with an ordinance with fire protection.
Right, right.
So, there is nothing residential with that?
No. You have any comments on that, Tom?
If they do do it, I feel it should be on the roof of the house, not in your yard where everybody owns that. Put it on your roof.
Anybody else have any comments on solar?
What if you just put it in and, and you want to go for a variance? Just like.
That's what I thought the orange is going to be, that's a dollar.
So, for this solar principal energy system, it's a, it's only a conditional use, and for the principal ones, a conditional use in M one. You can't do it in agriculture. If you did, you'd have to go through the zoning hearing board and go for a use variance, and it can get denied.
With even, even with me, I got cows right next to my house, there's millions of things in the E code three sixty.
Right.
And they don't, these three people, they said they could have them here, and I'm done.
The solar compressed cancer.
What, you mean the solar farms?
No, we're talking about cows.
Oh, farms, oh, that's a definition.
I'll show you this.
Like cattle farms?
I thought I said, how come you can't get a recommendation of denial for, and Vegas?
We can.
Well, why not?
Okay, this is my business.
But what's going to happen is, is going to happen.
Right there, there's a cup of coffee. There's the B M town.
We're just an advisory board, it's all up to the supervisors that they do that.
Okay.
You're not allowed to have it just like it's all. They put it in, they help you, just like these guys.
Okay.
Okay, any other comment on solar? Kathy, John? Would you have?
Nope, I'm good.
Not that? Okay, you have anything else, or?
No, that's, that's, that's all I have, yeah.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, we're getting.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm happy that you're putting it in the industrial. Part of our farm is in Smith Township near the Kelly property.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it just, I think it's good to maybe, um, address it now before companies want to come in and start doing things.
Has you heard in those hearings, Smith Township's learning everything, so.
Well, they are, and, you know, it just, it's unfortunate if the township is a little bit late on deciding, you know, if they're allowed to be somewhere, deciding the best place to put it. And, um, and that's why I came tonight, I was hoping that if you didn't realize that, I was going to try to enlighten you.
And that's what Smith Township, they put it into, unfortunately, some applications came in.
Beforehand.
Beforehand, and it's.
Yeah, that's what they were trying to do here, to get stuff started beforehand.
Right, and it's such, and it's just such a mess. Yeah.
Okay, that's correct.
Anything else?
You do have an approval of minutes on your agenda.
Oh, thank you. We have approval of the minute, we read the minutes from the last meeting?
We need to sign up, please.
I'll make a motion, approve the minutes as last time.
I second.
All those in favor?
All right.
We'll ask for, have, have them sign off, who was here.
What's that?
They should sign in who was here, the names of people that were here.
Yeah, we don't, they don't do that for this, I guess.
Don't they?
Make a motion for dismissal, the gentleman?
I'm making a motion.
Kathy second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Could you flick the switch, please? You get that chair.
You get that chair, you got the switch.